And Chair Baughman, just a reminder, Rituja let us know she is going to be absent for this meeting.
Yep, got it. We're also going to be missing Karthik as well.
Oh, okay. Thank you for letting me know.
I want to give Karen one more minute here.
Chair Baughman, this is Evan. Just before we wrap up tonight, I have a quick announcement about next Planning Commission's packet agenda. Or Agenda Packet.
Is that what you call a teaser, Evan?
A cliffhanger.
Keeps our attention right till the very end. Yeah, now we gotta stick around. All right, well, let's go ahead and get started. Maybe Karen will join us. I don't see her here. Okay, welcome, everyone. Let's get started. This is the May 20th, 2021 Samamish Planning Commission meeting. Let's start out with roll call. So Mark Baughman, I'm obviously here. Our Vice Chair, Rituja Indigre, is absent this evening and let us know that ahead of time. Karthik Satharman also just let me know a few minutes ago that he would not be able to attend. Mike Fresco.
Here.
TC Labby.
I am here and experiencing some camera difficulty.
Josh Amato.
Here.
And I still don't see Karen Malk.
Chair Baughman, we're gonna go ahead and give Karen a call and see if we can get her on. You can go ahead and proceed, though.
Okay, so the next thing is actually the Meeting Accessibility Statement. Jackie, if you can read that or multitask.
Yes, hold on just one second. Pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 20-25, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the Virtual Planning Commission meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public and public comment is still able to be submitted. To view live, you can view on the city's website, on the city YouTube channel, and on Comcast Channel 21 within Samamish only. To view the meeting later, the videos are typically available the day after the meeting, on the city website, on the city YouTube channel, and on Comcast Channel 21.
Great, thanks. Next, approval of the agenda. Are there any comments or corrections, changes? Not really corrections, any comments on the agenda? Nope, no comments on the agenda, so we'll call the agenda approved by common consent. Next is approval of the meeting minutes from our May 6th meeting. Does anyone have any corrections or comments about the meeting minutes from our May 6th meeting? I don't see any, so we'll call the May 6th meeting minutes approved by common consent. Next is non-agenda public comment. So anyone who wants to make some comments, public comments, that are not related to our agenda topic this evening, and our agenda topic this evening is a little presentation on beginning work on a community vision statement. So anything other than that, now's the time for public comment.
I'll go ahead and read this statement one more time. We do already have two callers on the line. Pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 20-25, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the Virtual Planning Commission meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public and public comment can be submitted. Up to three minutes of verbal public comment may be provided per person live during the meeting. In order to provide verbal public comment, you must call in. Please call the following number and input the access code when prompted. The phone number is 1-872-240-3311. And the access code is 699-839-229. Once you have joined, you'll be placed on mute. The meeting operator will unmute you when it is your turn to comment. You will hear an automated voice say unmuted when that occurs, and the operator will ask you to begin your comment. Please hang up when your comment is complete. So we'll go ahead and go to our first caller. Please begin by stating your name and where you live for the record, whenever you're ready.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. Paul Stickney in Samamish here. Yeah, I sent in an email later this afternoon. Take a look at your convenience. I'm just gonna speak to it a little bit and would invite any other conversations that you'd like to have in more depth. I sent in six PDFs, A, B, and C. Two were from Tuesday night's council meeting about the Burke EIS. And the third is one page from a PRR I did a couple of weeks ago where I got a copy of the draft Burke EIS, which had roughly 200 pages that were approximately, anecdotally, 70% redacted. But a piece of what was on one of those pages I've got on as PDF C. And this shows what the volume overcapacity numbers that are being studied in the Burke EIS are. So I contend that the Burke EIS is focusing on symptoms, not on ailments. Symptoms are traffic and traffic and currency standards. Aliments are unoptimized underlying land use that have created these issues. Now switching for a sec to PDF D and F that I sent. PDF D shows three different approaches to the future of Samamish and information in the middle, sort of four topics. The Burke EIS is comprehensively looking at the current comp plan and lower growth options via volume overcapacity standards being reverse engineered into land use. PDF D suggests that we get missing information called the two and single-family buildout and consider optimizing alternatives. The correct way to move forward in the community is to get complete information, really compare consequences of all three approaches after being informed, and tap into the emotions based on the consequences of the outcomes of everything and which path is best for our community. So PDF E, you've seen before, but it's the thick black line. And basically just shows you can make decisions absent sufficient information, or you can make them with sufficient information. I'm suggesting that we make them with. PDF F is Article 2 from Enrich and Sustain that goes into the specifics of what are the five parts of the two and the four major parts of single-family buildout, which is information that we need in order to figure out the best holistic land use for the future that adds the most value for our community in holistic and sustainable ways. My ask of each of you is to reflect on what you've seen from me over the last year or two, the information in tonight's email. And if city council members reach out to ask you what you think about adding this information and adding optimizing alternatives to the Burke EIS, have a conversation with them about it. The thing I'm looking for is elegant, comprehensive solution.
I'm sorry, we're gonna have to pause. Three minutes is up.
Okey-dokey.
Thank you. I've just unmuted our second caller. Go ahead and begin whenever you're ready.
Hi, this is Mary Victor, and I live at 408-208th Avenue Northeast in Samamish for the last 20 years. Today, I re-forwarded an email that I sent on April 15th and spoken verbally to on May 6th. The reason I'm sending it is I am hoping that Planning Commissioners or anybody interested or the city staff would look at least at the visual portions I put in the .ppt file, which is a Microsoft PowerPoint. And if you can't read that format, let me know, and I'll change it into a PDF for you. But what it is, is in just driving around, living and working and having children, I've seen a lot of developments over the years that I've noticed, and it's one of my favorite places to drive by and look. It's called the Kirkland Bungalows, and it's, this is kind of about community character and what types of things you can have. It's just a short street, about 640 feet. It curves slightly up and down. It's on 2.2 acres and has 15 single-family home residences, so it's about an R7 if it was zoning in Samamish. The original subdivision was from 1906 and was recently done in 2004 and built in 2005, as shown by the Microsoft PowerPoint that I sent in, and there's also two short plat pages, which are easy to read. The individual lot sizes, however, are only about 2,300 to 3,500 square feet each. And the biggest one, they only have one, it is 4,000 square feet in lot size. There is a gazebo for community use next to a bus stop waiting area, so the HOA space can use that. They also have multiple tracks, which total 12,500 square feet for the 15 homes to use. It really has good open space and feel, attractive greenery. There's green stormwater infrastructure in the ditch on the houses side, and there's also a stormwater pond and overflow area that's actually owned by the city of Kirkland in two tracks. And it doesn't even have to be fenced in. There is parking in each single car garage and also outside that single garage on each person's driveway. Some can be, are longer, and some have shared driveways. There is also parking available on the south side of the street, which is really nice for deliveries. And I have seen the FedEx driver and the UPS driver go by and do their thing during the time I was there. Each home is only about 1,500 square feet, and they're just two-story. They're not towering monsters. They're nice and lovely to see, and there are other things nearby around. And I put the adjacent neighborhood, some photos of that in the PowerPoint as well. So I give you the addresses. I give you a link that you can click on. You can use Google Street View to do your own tour. And the King County Assessor appraises these at about 700,000 to 713,000, and there was a recent sale for, I think, $880,000. So I'm trying to show it to you to say, hey, is this something you're interested in? If it is, let's make sure our city code allows it, that the Development Reg Space 2 would not only allow it, but promote it and maybe even incentivize it. So that's my input for today. Thank you for considering it, and I hope any commissioners attending today or absent today would follow up with my email and look at it. Thanks.
Thank you very much for your comments. That was our second and last caller, so I'll hand it back to you, Chair Baughman.
Thanks, Jackie. Okay. Next, we move on to our new business item, which is a presentation this evening on the start of the working plan for a community visioning project. So let's see, Sarah or Miriam, who's taking the lead on starting this off here?
Sarah, you wanna go ahead and pop up the presentation?
I think I don't have permission. Jackie, would you mind giving me permission for sharing my screen?
There you go. You should be on set.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Sarah. It's busy, and joining me is Miriam Lechner. Tonight, we are going to talk about the Community Visioning Project. While presenting, we will turn off our camera, and after the presentation, we will turn it on back for the discussion. Starting in early 2022, the city of Samamish will be beginning the update of our comprehensive plan. The vision statement is a foundational piece of this work as it describes the community values and provides direction for what Samamish's future should look like. The project we are presenting to you tonight focuses on engaging the community to better understand their priorities and desires for the city so we can create a vision statement that reflects these things. Tonight, we are sharing an overview of the scope of work so you can be more familiar with the project because we will be needing your help as the project gets started later this summer. For this project, we want to understand what the community priorities are for the future of the Samamish. Additionally, we know that it's also important for the community to understand how regional planning works and the city's role within the regional planning. We also want to ensure that our work exactly reflects the city's voice. So our third goal is to have a statistically valid survey reaching as many Samamish residents and stakeholders as possible. Building on the third goal, we know that extensive outreach is going to be needed with the special strategies to reach those that tend to be more isolated. And finally, we want to use the input gathered to evaluate the current vision statement and see how it needs to be changed.
So one of the primary deliverables, as Sarah just mentioned, is this statistically valid survey. There's a lot of work that goes into developing, disseminating, and analyzing this type of survey, so we anticipate that this component is going to take a significant amount of time from the consultant as well as the project budget. We also know that we need a variety of approaches and tools so that we can reach as many Samamish residents and stakeholders as possible. We're looking to the consultant to create a detailed project and communication plan, but we know we'll be creating a Connect Samamish page, creating outreach toolkits, and coordinating a range of opportunities so that we can reach people where they are. We're also asking that the consultant create a detailed report and presentation that describes the process by which the community was engaged, what the community had to say, and how that feedback shaped the proposed vision statement. Because the planning period for the upcoming comp plan update is 2024 to 2044, we felt it was especially important to engage Samamish youth in this project. So we'll be looking for opportunities to partner with local schools as well as the Samamish Youth Board. And while we have a few ideas on what this might look like, we're interested in hearing the consultants' ideas as well and then working together to create some really exciting opportunities that capture the youth's perspective. So in order for this project to be successful, we'll be needing your support. With the goal of reaching as many Samamish residents and stakeholders as possible, we're definitely going to be needing your assistance with community outreach. As the project ramps up, we'll be asking you for input on local community groups as well as organizations to reach out to so that we can tap into social networks. And we'll also be asking you all to help promote the project, the survey, and events with your neighbors, family, and friends who live or work here in Samamish. We'd also love for you to attend the various events and meetings that we'll be hosting. And then in addition to that, we'll be needing your review and insight for the various materials developed for this project. In addition to the vision statement and the final report that the consultant will be creating, we'd like your perspective based on your own experience as well as the feedback that you receive from others to help us understand what worked well and what we need to improve on so that we can carry those lessons learned into our outreach for the comp plan that's gonna be starting early next year.
The staff is finalizing the RFP and anticipate that it will be released on May 24th. Our goal is to start the project officially in July and initiate the outreach and community engagement plan so we can come back to the City Council and Planning Commission in October and provide an update. Then we will present the project result as well as draft vision statement to the Planning Commission in December and to the City Council in January for approval. Thank you, everyone, and Chair Baughman and floor is yours.
Thanks to both of you. Does anyone have any questions or comments they'd like to ask about the process of getting this started? I think I understand the, you know, the schedule is really just to be complete by next January. And can you say again, and maybe I zone this a little bit, but the end product, what is the end product? Is it just a single report, or is there more to it than that?
That would be a statistically valid report, like if you are going to conduct a survey, and the end result would be a new proposed vision statement. That is the result of having the survey and conducting public engagement.
So the consultant will gather the information and then work with you guys as staff, and then you'll develop a kind of a proposed list, and then do, does the Planning Commission then have a, some kind of, maybe I should say it this way, do you envision that the Planning Commission will have some sort of participation in deciding whether the vision statement is what it should be? Or is it more of just participating in the process and less about the end result?
Miriam, would you mind answering to that question?
Yeah, so as Sarah mentioned, we'll be sharing the draft vision statement as well as kind of the final report that describes the process with you all in December. And so at that meeting, that would be an opportunity to give us feedback on both the draft, sorry, the draft vision statement as well as if there's any edits to the report that you think need to be made or any clarifications.
Okay, anyone else? Mike? Mike, you're on mute.
I thought I hit it, and I must have hit it twice. Sorry. So the output, the prime output is the vision statement, so relatively short description of the vision for Samamish in the future. Is that correct?
Yeah, of course.
Okay.
Josh?
I'm curious. Right now, the vision statement says stuff about a multimodal community or something along those lines. And we're not that. And a lot of that is outside of our control, right? We can't control King County or King County Metro or sound transit. I'm curious how you balance what people wish we were with the outside entities that control how much we can actually become what they wish. Does that make sense? Like multimodal sure means we can walk on walking paths, and we've got bike paths and stuff, and that's something we're working towards. But it also means, you know, mass transit. So I'm curious how we balance what people want versus what's realistic within our vision statement.
Sure. I think that's gonna be kind of a two-part thing. I think we'll be looking for the consultant to help kind of guide some of that conversation, especially as we're talking about regional planning and how we fit in with regional planning to help people better understand that component. And then I think, too, as we move into the comp plan update, you know, they'll be looking to the vision and kind of using that to drive some of our policies, along with the CPPs from King County, so that hopefully we're at least setting kind of the foundational pieces to move in the direction that people want us to go to, even if it's gonna be, you know, beyond the 20-year planning period.
And CPP means community.
Countywide planning policies for King County.
Thank you.
TC, did you have a question or comment?
I did. How much, I guess, care or thought is going into making our community vision centric to what the core elements of our community already is? Is this simply a statement around the wish list for the future? Or are we also embracing the elements that have been successful within the community?
I think that's a really good question, and I would anticipate that the consultant, whoever we choose to work for, sorry, work with, will help us decide how to shape some of the questions in the survey as well as in our different engagement events to kind of talk about, you know, what are the elements of the city currently that people like and want to keep? And what are the elements that they want to add to for the future? So I think it'll be a mix of both, and they'll help us develop questions to get to that information.
This is Kelly. I just wanted to add on to that. The vision should be, you know, for the 20-year planning horizon, so it's 2024 to 2044. So in exactly what Miriam stated, it's, you know, it's an opportunity for our community to provide feedback on the current elements, the current goals and policies under our comp plan that, you know, really reflect our community that they like, things that they would like to see changed. But we are, you know, when we're looking at what the timeframe is, it's really 2024 to 2044. And that's our comp plan, planning horizon.
Just to clarify, it's a vision statement, but it's not just an empty document, right? This vision statement that we're doing now is the start of our comp plan that will decide a bunch of policies. So the vision statement will drive a bunch of other policy changes, right? So we're not just, this isn't just pie in the sky we wish it were. This is like realistic goals we should have.
Yeah, so we're kind of looking at this, looking to the vision statement as the first foundational piece in the comp plan update. And so as we start to look at the policies, you know, obviously, we'll be looking at the requirements regionally. But we'll also be looking to the vision statement to see, you know, what are the things that people have indicated are most important to them or that the direction that they want the city to go in, and really thinking about our policies and goals and how those fit into those. So it'll kind of be, I view it as a lens that you'll be looking through as you start to review the policies and the goals.
Okay, anybody else? So Mike?
Just another quick, since the comp plan's come out, what's the timing for the comp plan, the beginning of work on that?
So, sorry, Sarah, do you want to go ahead and answer that? So we'll be starting in early 2022 for the comp plan update, and it's due back for review, I think, towards the end of 2023.
All right, thank you.
I guess my last comment for thinking about it, at least, is if you go back again and reread the previous one, it's a little bit of a mixture of concrete stuff and pie in the sky theoretical stuff. And so I think it will be very interesting to see how this new version of a vision is developed around how much of it is very undefined and hard to then translate into anything, and how much of it provides some context that allows the comp plan to really, you know, consider whether it should move forward or something. So for example, you know, from its expanding tree canopy, that's a pretty specific thing that can result in some actions. But Samamish is a vibrant community. Well, that's not so easy to put a finger on. So I guess I would just encourage as this, begin working with the consultant to keep that very much in the focus is if we're gonna spend the time and energy and resources and go through an exercise like this, let's have the outcome, have at least some measure of specificity that can then, you know, be translated into action through the comp plan. And I don't want to be the, you know, poo-poo everything that is kind of the ideas that lead to a vision, but it needs to have something to it as well to grab onto. So that would be an encouragement I would suggest. Anybody else with any last comments before we wrap this up? Okay, thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Miriam.
Thank you.
All right, I think that's it for this evening, although Evan said that he, oh, I'm sorry, we need to do a public comment, and I apologize. So this will be a gender-related public comment related to this topic. And Jackie, I suspect you want to read the statement, and then we'll see if we have anybody for public comment.
I'm sure you guys are tired of hearing the statement, but I'll read it again. Pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 20-25, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the Virtual Planning Commission meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public and public comment can be submitted. Up to seven minutes of verbal public comment may be provided per person live during the meeting. In order to provide verbal public comment, you must call in. Please call the following number and input the access code when prompted. The phone number is 1-872-240-3311. And the access code is 699-839-229. Once you've joined, you'll be placed on mute. The meeting operator will unmute you when it's your turn to comment. You'll hear an automated voice say unmuted when that occurs, and the operator will ask you to begin your comment. Please hang up when your comment is complete, and it looks like we And it looks like we have one caller on the line. I will go ahead and unmute you, and go ahead, begin whenever you're ready.
Hi, this is Mary Victor. I live at four zero eight two hundred eighth Avenue Northeast in Samamish, Washington. I've lived in the city twenty years, and I've also been active as an advocate at City Council on Planning Commission meetings since St. Patrick's Day on two thousand fifteen. So I've seen a lot of things come through, and I just wanted to share some of the things that I've learned because I was actually at some of the meetings when the current vision statement was actually written. I remember the Parks Commission was working on it at the time. And it was amazing to see what came to them and what they morphed it into and their feedback that they had in the meeting. So what I've learned through the process of being an active citizen with public comment is, as stated in the packet, that community vision is an aspirational description of the future, and it's supposed to highlight community values which are reflected in the city's plans and activities and priorities, which I think the dovetails with what staff just presented tonight. But I also learned that, you know, there are regulations and everything, but pretty much whatever the city adopts of the comp plan, the comprehensive plan, which was originally adopted in two thousand three and then updated in two thousand fifteen because it took more than eight years, and then it's modified a little bit every year as needed by the city or by docket requests. The comp plan's really a guiding light for what's going to happen. So if you want something to happen in the city, and it's not in the comp plan, it's really hard because you have to get it in the comp plan, and that process is very time-consuming. So I think we need, in looking for what we want it to be, we also need to look at what's in the comp plan and what can be emphasized. And just to give you an example of that, and Chairman Mark Baughman already said this, from its expanding tree canopy, that is very specific. It says, we have a tree canopy, and we're supposed to expand it. And I do believe that the work that Davy Tree did with our city for the Urban Forestry Management Plan in two thousand fifteen, I believe that tree canopy has not been expanding. I believe it would be going down, first of all, because we've had pipeline development. Secondly, I know there's had trees getting removed that either aren't reported or people don't replace. And even if you remove healthy trees, it's hard, it's very hard and time-consuming to do. And we need to look at the amount of evergreen versus deciduous trees that we have because that also affects the canopy and the understory. So there are things in the tree regulations that we can work on now as we go through, like the development regulations, which are upcoming or other things. But you kind of need to know what's in the comprehensive plan. So that's just the one example that I want to give. I also think that we should have more diverse types of housing. We not only need affordable housing, but housing affordability needs to be addressed, which is one of the things I gave emphasis to during regular public comment. And I think that we need seniors to be able to stay in the city and have places, places that they can live and retire with their friends so they don't have to move away in a senior center. So those are some of the things that I've heard about and would like to see, some of the things that I've noticed. And if you haven't had the time as a planning commissioner, either as a new one or as a continuing one or someone that's done more things for the city, I think it really is worth the time to spend time reading through the comprehensive plan, see what we have in there, see what we've kind of focused on, because that is the guiding light for the city and getting code regulations that are either currently developed through the current code or through ordinances or adopted resolutions, and what is available that we can massage into things that can be done. So I'm excited that the city is already working on doing things for the next comprehensive plan and spending time and money doing a good community visioning. But I do want you to know it is hard to get things in the comp plan and then to get them through. And I think that's some of the best work that we need to do as public individuals and as commissions and anybody who lives, works, or plays in the city of Samamish. So I'll yield the rest of my time in the seven minutes and just wanted to say that tonight as part of my public comment.
Thank you, Mary. I'll go ahead and place you back on mute. We do have another caller. I'll go ahead and unmute you. Please state your name and where you live before you begin. Go ahead and begin.
Hello, Planning Commissioners. Paul Stickney here in Samamish. I just heard Mary's comment, and she and I, I think, were two people, along with mostly Larry Crandall and somewhat Nancy Anderson, that sat in on virtually all the meetings during two thousand fourteen and fifteen. As our last comp plan, our second comp plan, which repealed and replaced our first one, was crafted. So if you have any questions about all that, happy to help and share a lot of information. The, specifically regarding tonight's topic on the vision for the city, the City Council received a presentation on this on Tuesday night, and I just went in today to mark down the times from roughly about forty-three minutes to one hour and five minutes. Oh, I'm sorry. I messed that up. That was the part for the Burke EIS, excuse me, for the vision. It ran from about one hour and five minutes to one hour and twenty minutes. So the council had a packet and a presentation that was a little bit different from yours. You could go in and listen to that. Tom Odell had some interesting things to say specifically about the vision during that meeting. He mentioned that many of the council members worked on that at one of their council retreats, and that's true. In two thousand and fourteen, if you look at the two thousand fourteen retreat agenda package, I think there was quite a bit of work on the vision. And Tom had some interesting things to say about that that I think you'd find of interest in this. My comment on the vision will, you know, I could go on and on and on and on, but I'll keep it really short instead. I think this is an opportunity for something beyond the twenty-year cycle. It's really important. But as you've heard from me and seen in some of the stuff I've turned in, the seven-generation planning perspective is real, thinking about what legacy do we want to leave and how do we want lifestyles and livabilities to be here in Samamish for a long term? You know, we got here based mostly on King County. About eighty-five percent of the structures in Samamish existed in nineteen ninety-nine that are here today. Samamish is built about fifteen percent. How do we want our housing mix and economic services? And if we work on those things, we can turn and add enrichments to virtually everything else in the community. So I'm not suggesting that this process as presented gets altered. I'm just saying that, as maybe I'll call it a outrigger, it goes along with, we should give some careful consideration to the long-term holistic, sustainable approach to add additional assets, to create resiliency, enrichments for the community across the board, which hangs together with the earlier comment today on the Burke EIS. So a simple summary would be, I think it's very important to plan for specific twenty-year comp plan vision. Totally agree with that. Have input on that from the last comp plan and for this one. But I think there's a real opportunity to think of, to think of things from a legacy long-term perspective, and that type of planning hasn't occurred here. And since we inherited much of what we have from King County, it may be interesting to take a longer view, looking past, current, and future as to what we want, and start to work on that path as well. Again, invite, if you'd like to sit down and talk about any of this stuff, happy to meet and talk. Have a good evening and appreciate the opportunity for a public comment tonight.
Thank you for your comments. I'll go ahead and put you back on mute there. That is our last caller for the night. I'll go ahead and hand the floor over to Evan for a quick announcement.
Thank you, Jackie. I just wanted to give our planning commissioners a heads up that we will be pushing out the agenda packet for our June third meeting early next week, just so you all have a few extra days to review. As you'll remember, on June third, we're planning to review some of the draft code and the red lines. And just to give everybody a few extra days to review that and, you know, make their comments and markups, we'll be attempting to get it out on, looking at Tuesday. So just a heads up on that. Thank you.
Thanks, Evan. And just as a reminder to everybody, that's for the June third meeting. We also on the calendar have June seventeenth, which is a regular six-thirty time, and July first, which is a regular six-thirty time. So June third is a five-thirty start. You guys can make sure and keep track of that. That'd be great. All right. Unless there's anything else, would somebody like to move to adjourn for a short, early adjournment this evening?
I'm moved.
Second?
And second?
Second, that we adjourn for this evening? All those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Those no? Thanks, everybody. Have a nice evening.